Good evening everyone, and welcome to the Towns Market Planning Board meeting for Monday, August 5th. We are all here, we have a forum. And I'd like to confirm the requested meeting agenda, I know there are no changes, aren't there anything? You have the meeting notes ready Jim?
Could you speak up please?
Alright. Alright, let's try this again. Is that better? Alright, so you've always seen Jim's meeting notes, have you had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion to accept them? Second please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension motion carries. You have a draft for July 15th meeting minutes. Any corrections, additions? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension motion carries. I have no correspondence or announcements. Guess maybe just a reminder which I'll do at the next meeting as well. The first meeting in September, you recall, will be on the Tuesday because of the Labor Day holiday. So just a heads up to the public and a heads up to remind us. I think it's the third. So we'll begin this meeting this evening with a new application. Adam Higdon, 11 Duchess Terrace Site 11 Special Use Permit for the repair of a foundation and the replacement of windows. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to do.
I'm Lou Green, Lewis, and the architect from our firm, contact me. And I'm here to present for Adam.
Why won't you just the microphone since we're all trying to do better in this?
What you're trying to make me feel short, I'm not too short.
Well, actually, just the microphones fall, not yours.
Okay. I said I'm here for Adam Higdon and Angela Sheraro. They are trying to do some repairs to the foundation. And they're pleased with those in kind. Because one of them fell in the shower area now. So it has to be tempered. And it has to be reinforced. But they are the three windows that were not changed originally. So it should not be revealed. And then we have a letter from the neighbor stating that we can use their driveway. And we have another letter from the...
Are you talking about the highway line?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have all the documents that we show what's existing, what's proposed, and what's that we have in the next.
Okay, alright. You're gonna run through the specifics of the application?
Yes.
Okay.
This is... This is the existing house and existing garage. And they are showing the location maps and everything. And we're showing where the stockpile of materials would be. And this is part of the driveway that the neighbor allows us to use. That's hedged in. And this is the portion that we need to access to the window.
Any other questions? Jim, do you wanna go through your comments?
Sure. So we are in the pamphlets under the RCO. The property is listed as historically a landmark structure in the town. We had requested in our pre-conference meeting that the survey be submitted to ensure the work can be completed on the southern side of the parcel within the remains of the balance of the applicant's property since the homes are so close together. We asked the pictures of the current windows be provided and that they get comments from the Town Highway Department. So we've heard that we did hear from the Town Highway Department. We do have pictures that were submitted of the foundation. As well as the windows are going to be replaced from the back of the house.
Which ones are on the right of the house?
Are going to be replaced. I think primarily we're talking about issues related to historic preservation, consistency of community characters, relates to the windows. However, I stand to maintain concern about the potential impacts or intrusion into the adjacent property to the south and the neighbors there because if I'm reading certainly not correctly, I believe we have two feet in the corner of the building into the property line here. And a slant over there. And I just still see a concern about the ability of crews to get in and do foundation work within two feet of the building. So that's still a concern that I have. And then we needed more details on the footings. I don't know if those were required or not.
Well, we sent them the two details of the footings.
Are they in there?
Yes.
So, yes, your son, because I'm no... Right, and I worked for... I'm a real estate agent, I'm a trade. Yeah. On the main first page, is the construction base in clear?
Not this one, sorry.
This one? So, I mean, we're trying to decide that everything will be, and actually be on the neighbor's property, but of course, it is very close. It's reasonable, probably, it's just...
No, I don't think we understand, you know, that you want to get the foundation repaired and that's understandable. I'm just concerned, you know, if you can't stay on the property, it's a fee. Then you're intruding on the neighbor's property, we just have to make sure we come to some kind of conclusion as to how that is going to be handled. Although, if you can't.
We have plans to install property. And we didn't go to see what happened.
Did you say there's a fence, I didn't understand.
We'll install it as...
We're doing a little install. Of tablet structure.
About the southern side of the property line. But it's still giving you two feet to work with it, so I mean, if you can work within two feet...
One question for you. Is they could get approval from their neighbor to...
That's part of the discussions that everyone else has, where we stand with follow those discussions. It's just a... I want to make sure the board is comfortable with whatever is being done there, that it is being done appropriately. You know, onsite and or within their's appropriate permission, whatever it may be. So those are my comments.
Yes.
What's the nature of the structure along that wall? Is there a cellar there?
No, there is no cellar.
How far below grade does the foundation extend?
We're not sure, so that's why we want to repair it and give it a go.
Because if you have a two-foot excavation and you go down more than four feet, you're gonna have to start stepping back.
We're not gonna go down more than four feet because that's the code.
Okay. So there... No concern at all that you might be undermining the foundation of the neighbor's property?
No, we're not doing that at all. Within our parameters.
Okay. So the goal here is to rebuild the foundation?
Right.
To a sound structure?
Correct.
And you don't know how far down that goes?
I don't know how far at the moment, unfortunately, we have pictures, but I can't... There's no example for those, but it would not go beyond four. Because that's the code.
The code is... What code are you quoting?
For the code, if you're lowering down, then you have to go on the story for four. So...
Okay. So it's all, it's not foundation wall that you're...
No.
Okay. It's just loose soil and you have some sort of structure on the surface that's failing. Okay. You're not gonna put in a footing?
No, no, no.
Below the crossline?
No.
This is the full screen here.
Yes. It seems from that detail like you have to go down four feet, 10 inches in order to get your footing established.
This goes beyond the soil.
Okay.
So this four feet plus the 10 inches, I mean, you could make it a little shorter if you have to.
I'm just concerned about, you know, for safety's sake, you would have to have a wide enough trench so that it doesn't collapse on the workers. And also, you don't want to do enough excavation that it starts to disrupt the neighbor's foundational.
Because I don't really understand this, I need somebody to help explain. There is currently a foundation that holds the house up there.
Correct.
And it needs to be replaced.
Right.
So while you're replacing it, how is the house getting held up?
Well, there will be temporary supports in the interval. So it will hold the house up.
So the very first thing that you would do, you would need down and putting temporary supports, was that correct?
Correct.
And then once they're in place, would you remove the foundation that's there, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, because it's really not doing much of anything.
And then you would build the new foundation, and is it all the way around the town just?
No, it's on three sides of the building. It's on the three sides of the building.
And what's on the total side?
It's on both sides.
I see, and the other remain?
We do this.
I see. So you're on the replacement part of it?
Correct.
The only comment I have just was Craig, I think the other house is about four feet off that line. So it is, with what you're saying, we're dealing with probably six feet between the buildings. From what I'm seeing. And I just don't know. I mean, wouldn't that be something? I mean, roof covers, safety, you know, but it's not necessarily...
Well, that would be the building department, but our discussion needs to be, you guys are comfortable, the board is comfortable with the plans that are here.
Right.
And that we're gonna be able to follow those plans that they seem realistic to, I think is kind of the extent of it. Then it does fall on the building department to ensure that it's done properly and safely. Obviously, that's outside of the...
Right. And I think, I think just looking at it to all the points that... I'm assuming the public hearing, I'm here from the neighbors, they don't want to have that. But it would be nice to have something from them, with them understanding this plan. Have you talked to the neighbors on this?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. Yeah, I mean, it obviously needs to get done, but I think it is really close. And we just, we want to make sure that, you know, bad conduct could be bad conduct, so...
And I agree, I mean, it's a very important measure that is vital to protecting a historic building. And, you know, we don't want these things to disappear.
Of course.
And it is just, it does present some special challenges.
Anyone else?
Did you say that you have to talk to the neighbor?
Yes.
And what did the neighbor say?
The neighbors said, I don't think it's right to call out.
They're supportive, the plan is to... Hi, Adam. The plan is supportive, it's more than six feet, but I'm planning from the builders to help me use hand digging on the side. The original stone wall foundation in the front part of the house is fine, just needs repairs. We're just gonna still repair on that stuff. It's the back part of the house that doesn't have a proper foundation in the first place, that is in urgent need of repair before this is to work on at all times. So that is the urgency of the plan and why we are thitting through the back to get where most of the work needs to be done. On the side will only be still repaired, unless we'll be from inside on the... Through where the patio is.
And just to be curious, are there roof covers on the house presently?
Do you think you could ask your neighbor to write on the little letter?
I've spoken to them in the last couple of weeks about the project, and I was, and trying to write her as our neighbors have been working this time as well.
And Jim, I guess a question to you, can we just... Can we just... What is in our... Right, so, like, I think hand digging would be the best way to do it. And I think it's very possible, hand digging is difficult, but possible. Is that something we could name as part of?
It is listed currently.
Okay.
It is listed currently.
So then...
Here, it's listed hand digging area here.
Shy, I missed that, there's a lot of...
Yeah, I'm not sure necessarily maybe this is a back here, I don't know about area of the room, but that's, it's back here.
A much more comfortable than the street.
Maybe that just needs to be the area up here.
Would you like the area?
Oh, for sure, yeah, we need to label properly, so if that, yeah. If the area that we're talking about...
Machine digging from the back where the patio is? Who's the back? He's the back of the house, he's like... Hand digging will happen along the original foundation, which is just gonna be silver fair and shorted. That'll only be two feet deep to replace bronze sills. The back part is black, his machine digging will happen from the back where it says access to new foundation area. They'll largely be built from the inside, just blow hand digging on the south side to get where we need that.
This is one of the areas we're concerned, this is the narrowest part, you know, where it's shown the plaque. So this, you're proposing machines to do this and hand digging up at the front?
From the east side of the house, down and underneath from the east side. On the south side will strictly be wherever digging is here, along the...
So maybe this label can just be changed to say hand dig, you know, the south side or something like that. Something that makes it clear that on that side of the property could be... What we're missing there are...
The same.
Anyone else? Any comments, questions? Jim, I think you have a draft procedural resolution.
So for the board's consideration tonight, a draft procedural resolution for the order of the application by, I would say, Adam Higdon. I would select my special use permit, I'm a contractor, one, two, five. For replacement of existing windows, sections of the foundation of eastern side of the home, installation of driveway, and replacement with asphalt in County Creek, 11 Duchess Terrace, according to the RCO. Except for the application's supported documents, as I've prepared to do by the planning board, classifying the actions, actions Title II under Secur. We will have a public hearing on September 3rd. We will send this to the C A P for review, the Waterfront Advisory Committee for review, this will be sent to Hay Pack for review, Duchess County, this is the site plan. And we need two planning board members to read the site.
Alright. Sean, you ready? Alright, we now have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension motion carries. Either Sean or Craig will be in touch when we schedule the site. Thank you very much. We will now move into the public hearing portion of this evening's meeting. The first public hearing scheduled is Richard and Monique Matthews, 95 Pelicans Progress Road. Site 11, you've got a replacement of an existing position.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Rocky Pott on the architect for Richard Monique Matthews, we're here. This is our second meeting, public hearing. This is a ten year parcel located, five year parcel, excuse me, located in RC 5 zoning district, 95 Pelicans Progress Road. This is the working farm, this Pelicans Progress Road here. This is the existing house, it was built in the early 1860s. Matthews have been the owners since 1973. They've done a lot of work on the house, it was in rough shape when they first bought it. They could tell stories about it. The intent of the project is, because of some physical imperants now, they'd like to Asian places to stay in the home. So there's a small portion of the house in the back here, which is in pretty bad shape. We're seeking to demolish that and replace it with a similar addition, although larger and more commodious to meet their needs. Basically, it's a mudroom, a covered entrance coming in, a laundry room, and also... Their bedroom is on the second floor now. They're planning to sleep on the first floor eventually, as is required. So there's a very, very small full bathroom on the first floor. We're seeking to expand that to be accessibility standards, university design standards. So we need the additional scrupillage for that as well. We took great pains to try to make the addition match with the language of the existing building as reasonably as possible. Both from roof lines, this is the existing building here. This is actually a portion of the building that we're looking to remove. It's only about 10 foot square. Let's see, there are two. This is the profile of the new addition. Roof lines are similar pitch to the existing porch. Scale is similar to the existing front porch on here. Side trim details also will be very similar. We created a covered entrance back here. Currently, the Matthews have an exterior stair, which is kind of a trap, it's a short, flat stairs. We're creating a covered entrance back here with the staircase actually in the inside, so it's similar. Let's see. That's the majority of the... Several folks have come to the site, we've shown, you know, institutional, Ed McCain, Marty Kane from Happan. Billy's just came today, as a matter of fact, he went over with her. Also George from Cav, who's Cav's name?
Contamination Advisor.
George was there for that. And I think I forgot somebody else was there this morning. Oh, Kathy Hammer was there this morning. So that's basically the intent of the project. As far as the design is concerned, I have gotten some pushback from a couple of people because the addition, currently, the part that we're looking to demolish is flush with the north wall of the house. Okay? What we're looking to do is actually project out slightly, only four and a half feet in order to get the room that we needed within this university design bathroom. That also creates the covered entrance here. Covered entrance on the exterior and any interior entrance as well. The addition is going back about five foot nine beyond the current footprint, only four and a half feet from the north side as well. Only at about 155 square foot though. So it's relatively much. And we feel that because, you know, it's a rear addition. The house is already about 120 feet back from the road. So it's, the back part here really is not visible very much from the building's product, especially when you drive behind. It's also, there's a tree here, relatively small tree. You guys planted that tree to replace a tree that was...
Yeah.
That was not good, right? So they planted, it doesn't show in the drawing, but there's a tree here now. Plus the grates soaking down as it goes back as well. Building actually steps down, so it can have a flush walk-in from their garage, we pull into the driveway here, and then they can have a flush walk-in to the addition that way. So I had a conversation with Marty, he came out, he understood as an architect all the moves that he did. The only question, some of the window treatments that he proposed, he thought maybe... I tried to match the detail on the existing front porch, so we planned, he thought maybe this was a little too overdone. And he questioned the projection. Although I read his report, and his report basically stated that no rear addition should project anything beyond the front of the house, which it currently well be on the front of the house. So I didn't really understand that. But it is, it is quite far back, and it's something that everybody's, despite the fact that it's...
Jim, any additional comments?
No, I have no new comments, mainly stated last time with the issues, I think are primarily related to historic preservation. What I did bring up and mention last, I'm not sure, is that I thought a demolition might be required for this because we are changing a roof line, the existing addition's not historic, right? The existing porch are taken down?
Well, according to Marty, can you go back one sheet?
Yeah.
According to Marty, this is the part right here that we're taking down. The original building is basically this, and this part here is a T shape. That's clearly original. This, this has been changed dramatically over the years, even before the Matthews even owned the building. Foundation is different. They think if it was original to the building, maybe it was a covered porch, DeLeese felt that way as well. But all that fabric is long gone, and it's in pretty bad shape. Can access the plumbing and the crawl space, foundation will not be great. Not particularly attractive either, it really has no redeeming value.
So the reason I bring it up is the demolition permit may be required, so we're moving forward with the discussion and decision on this. We might just want to add to the resolution, so we'll report if the demolition permit is needed, that's approved as well.
I think they already filled one out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's part of the package.
So, we have the site visit for tomorrow. Laurel?
Yep.
Laurel went out of the site. I thought it was me and Jim who got us here photos.
Both, you said, one of us to go first, I'm not even...
That's right.
Both used to make photos, both lost their first, I'm right?
Oh, did you submit photos also?
It's just a couple.
Okay. Let's start, isn't it?
Okay, perfect. So, you know, some of the first things I noticed, like there's, and some of this was just discussed, but the addition, you know, the base of the... Okay. Jim, can we actually just go, keep going, have this one first? This is actually on the other side of the house, showing projectile width, angles. So this, this sort of style actually exists on the other part of the house where they're suggesting that, you know, this addition will come out from the side of the house and have a similar language to it. So I was showcasing sort of these other parts of the house. But if you keep going towards, I didn't use plenty of photos, but really more to explain what the current condition of that space looks like. There's the part of the foundation shifts from stone into cement block, so you can clearly see, it was almost like there was maybe a porch and then an addition upon it, and now the walls connect on the outside. So you have a seam, right, which is such indicative of, there was once an addition there. I, it's really difficult to use the space that currently exists, and Jim, if you go towards the interiors, it'll show some of that. So this is when you, you actually walk into a really, really narrow little walkway that's very hard to navigate, and then straight into this laundry room. There's very little place to move around. And even if it wasn't widened and just lengthened, you would not have much function in the space. You can go to the next one. This is a small closet between the bathroom and the laundry room, which, as it stands right now, could be absorbed to either space, but you still wouldn't have what felt like efficient depth to really have a handicap accessible, you know, bathroom plus the entrance that they're trying to accomplish. And then that's the bathroom, which is very small. I mean, there's a little shower, and even the toilet in your relationship to the sink felt very, very tight. So, you know, to me, when I was there, and I'm looking at the vocabulary of the rest of the house and these areas, the, this, this area protruding out is closer to the front than the area that they will be rebuilding, which is much closer towards the rear. And I don't think, I actually think the seams lining up the way they do now looks more awkward. It looks, the addition of the seam down the side of the house. And having, you know, the change of relationship that matches the other side seems to make sense to me.
Anything else?
I think that's it for now.
Anna?
I have no life here. Hi, this is from Duchess Valley Parcel Access. Because I didn't take a photo from the other side of the house. It simply shows the porch on the left side of the house that extends at the back of the house and extends out. And then I took a couple of photos of the site where they're proposing to remove and rebuild. So this is one, you can see how the current so-called addition simply joins the house directly without protruding, I'm hinting at all. And I think there's one more photo. Yeah, this simply shows that there's a lot that has gone on over time, you know, and various extensions and roofs and stories and so forth. It did occur to me that they really have the tighter length, you know, next to the existing addition to do something with if they wanted to. DeLeese has pointed out that it would be a narrow structure if it didn't protrude from the house. My primary concern with what's proposed is that it comes out and then overlaps the existing portion of the house in a rather strange way. I think you'd have to go back to the drawings to show this, Jim? The middle, you can see, it gets very close to the existing window. So if there was going to be something that comes out from the line of the house, my own preference would be that it simply... preference would be that it simply come directly out, as does the porch on the other side of the house at the back, rather than overlapping the existing original house in that manner. And as I said, there is more length, you know, they could go back further if needed. So that my own view is that that would be a better solution. And APAC did write a report. What they're saying in the recommendations section is, in general, rear addition should not extend beyond the front portion of the house, and the roof slope with any new structure be consistent with the slope of existing roofs. The use of three different sized windows on this small addition is visually disjointed. Generally speaking, roof porches are simpler in design than front porches. The duplication of the front porch columns might be eliminated in favor of the simpler version. I didn't quite understand the meaning of that.
I did, I said that.
I think that these back columns right there, where you walk up the back steps, they were questioning if they should match the front, basically, or if it's too similar. So, which, you know, I guess we can discuss. Also, just to point out, which was one of the discussions we had, if you look at the floor plan at the bottom, where this angled sort of protrudes out, and I totally know what you mean, and how like there's like an interesting integration near the window, but that's where they're trying to put the handicap-accessible shower, right? And so part of it is they're playing with both the structure and try to consider, you know, the authentic elements, and how do they, you know, make this house work for them?
But what I'm suggesting is that, as I said, there is room to go further back, and there are, I would think, lots of architectural possibilities, and how do we choose so the bathroom won't go on without overlapping the original section of the house?
So, and is it only this part here that's the question?
That's my primary concern.
So if it projected, but went back farther?
Yeah, that's what I was...
So only the over that? Because I did... I did a lot of research on additions in regular old houses. Additions in the back are very common, and projections from the existing house are very common also. And they look good. This was intended to not be overbearing to these designs, which is why we had a corner of 45. It's why we kept the roof. It's why we maintain that line coming across. And with regards to the fenestrations, that new window right there is identical to the windows in the existing house. Identical in size. Changes around the back with the mudrunners, but this light dimension is also the same as this light dimension and that light dimension. So there is consistency of four over four like the existing house in the statues, as well as light sizes. With regards to the trim around this covered entrance, I thought it was paying homage to the existing house to use some of the same old inforeills. And maybe attractive in fact, it's not a carbon copy of the existing front porch, but it does respect it. And the roof is the same, by the way, it's the same as the original. Whatever you're doing, a low one-story additions to the existing house, the lower roof should be lowered at a shallower pitch than the primary building, and also this is...
Other questions, audience, questions?
I had some feedback from APAC. George didn't have the opportunity to write up a full report, but we did discuss some of the, some of his observations. Just to summarize, Cav has reviewed the project, and while the intended alteration is not sympathetic with the appearance of the existing building, there's a negligible impact on the scenic, historic, or natural resources that Cav is responsible for representing. And that would hold true of the wetlands and the agricultural surroundings. So it's not, it's not going to be offensive to all of those things. I just, I have to share that, first of all, I think in the APAC report, there was some mention of the stone foundation of that, looks like it's an entry porch, or it had been, just an isolated porch.
The old one.
Yeah, and on the other side, it seems to be blocked or tarred cement. So I did look at the aerial photographs, the historic aerials going back to the 1930s, and you can see that the bulk of the house is intact with the protrusion off of the back, which is fairly common. Kitchen additions typically...
The original T shape, right?
Yeah, the original T shape. And the lateral addition seemed to appear sometime in the 1970s. And that's, you know, part of the way that historic buildings grow, is people introduce new uses, there are new requirements. And it's really important that whatever is done as far as alterations doesn't interfere with the overall perception of the house for what it is. There was some mention of the fact that many of the details that are original to the house have been remade over the years. Windows have been replaced, and there's some question as to the integrity of that front porch. And so it may be...
That front porch, we repaired it years ago. In the mid-'70s or whatever, the floor was rotting, the ceiling was rotting. So the columns, the furthest right, right? We took off the siding on the column, and right there in pencil, old carpenter's pencil. We started this house, it was either April or July, 1862.
Okay.
And we completed in July or April 1864. And everybody signed their name on it. It's out there. They don't want to tear the siding off. It's there. It was well, I think it was 10 or 12 guys worked on it, that signed their names. There was no familiar names from Rhinebeck. But that house originally, I know a guy that lived there from 1906 to 1914. Russ Hacken, the local contractor there in Rhinebeck apartment. He said it was an old house, and he moved there with his family. That was a tenant farm for the style house. That's what it was there. So, you know, that porch was probably original. My dad had a house where a guy from the historical society said it was an addition. You know, that signing and the way they wrote it there, you know, you could tell it was old.
Yeah, that's pretty compelling, and it's fascinating that you can find things like that. And I did find that it was, it's called Mountain View?
I never heard that name.
It's, that's what's in the town records, is that the name of the property is Mountain View.
Well, you can't see the mountains.
Yeah, and it's listed as one of our designated historic properties, which requires such a compelling interest that we, you know, do as much as we can to preserve it and learn from it what it has to tell us about the history of Rhinebeck. So. The roof pitch, you say, matches that front?
The front porch.
That front porch, like a 3'12". And I think that's about all that I have to offer.
Anyone else? Where do you want to go? Now, I'm sure Jim has a draft procedural resolution that was there, but you asked about them at this point. Are there any compelling reasons to change what they're proposing? Anyone's on there?
Well, I think they should, but I assume to be in a minority. What do you want?
To ask me? Well, I, you know, I can see the value of not having to overlap. With that being said, I'm okay with the proposal at hand and being in the house, and believe me, I'm very sensitive to like remnants of historic elements. That little addition doesn't showcase any of it, but I get that the overlap could make your redesign better, but I'm okay with it. I would be willing to move forward with this.
And it's my personal feeling that that, that perception, that it sticks out from what we perceive as the front silhouette of the house, really kind of an artifact of architectural drawings, because it shows on the drawing that it sticks out, but it depends on how you look at it, you know, when you're walking up to the house in three dimensions. How much of an intrusion is that going to be considered? And as the architect pointed out, there's a tree there. Maybe not going to be a tree there forever, so it's something worth considering that...
I asked that today about the landscape, and they said they would definitely, you know, they'd be happy to put in more trees and so forth. But the protrusion on the other side is closer to the front. So there's actually a sense of more balance now when you look at the front, because you kind of get it on both sides.
Right.
You know, it's like straight on one side.
It's an important consideration for additions to historic houses, that they not interfere with or confuse the original construction. So it's important to make them distinguishable, and I think that effort has been made in that respect. And I appreciate the respect that's shown for the fenestrations, really important key feature of historic buildings, so.
You know, the Matthews are really the inspiration for this. They love this house. They live there, they're a sign of great students. They didn't want to not want to leave the existing house. They want to stay there, they want to...
Somebody be done a form of wheelchair, not have a foot in wheelchair outside to shower. You're not going to get the shower down there.
That would be getting historic, wouldn't it?
So where did you come up on what happens at the back in Freeford Homes?
Well, I mean, that's just a trim detail. Certainly be willing to lessen the trim back there, if it causes a move in the existing house, because that's a relatively minor detail. Just thought it would help us on the back. I mean, it's going to be their primary entrance to the house, so.
If you were to change it, which I think is one of the things APAC was suggesting, what would you do?
Well, I mean, we would basically get it. So I made an effort, you know, to create traditional entablature here to match the capital detailing, the chambers that the pilaster just had, not the 45. Now, this is actually a structural post we're close. So that's a pressure treated six by six that I dressed. The same that Richard just explained, the existing porch has a core structural post from this, you know, human timber, and then they dressed it with flat stock in an ornamental way. That's what I was planning on doing back here. If this is deemed, you know, to be not produced with the design, then I would simply just use standard trim details similar to these existing ones.
Are those round or square columns?
Square. These are square, and these are square. This is actually a pilaster engaged on the wall. That's the only column. And then there's another pilaster around the corner where this simulated use invaded through the rest of the house. It's like an open corner. That's a huge change. The board thinks it's important.
Also, I just remembered something else. If you could look again at my photos, something that I wanted to mention. The, it's simply that when people install equipment such as this, eventually it is covered, and then the cover is painted to match the siding. And there are a lot of waters there. Is there some way to clean that up?
So that, there's a, that's a regulator for the gas block. I think that's a disconnect to this mini-split here. The mini-split that's here...
It'll be moved to the back.
Well, this is going to be moved out, but then the line set is actually going to go through the building. So this current line set is actually exposed over here on the building. That's going to go away, so that'll be... This one here, yeah, it's easy enough for us to paint it, but the addition will shield it even more. You have to get deep into the siding to see this.
We did paint the whole house. We have painted everything.
Yeah, Ben was talking about this. Painting the house, so it may get disappeared.
Probably over that mini-split back where we go.
Well, that's true. I mean, it's a mini-split, you know, the unit is over here. It's part of the house. Move around the back. It's about that support, too. Just run the line set through. See if you can... Then you won't see any.
Personally, I don't mind the projection. I agree with Delise. I think it's minor. It's a new addition, and there's going to be some things I think we can accept in a new addition that just come with this kind of change over time. So I'm comfortable with the application the way it is now. I would be, I'm just personally not interested in fiddling around with those details on the columns or not. They're really, they're new. They're going to be replacing, so that's my opinion. If you're ready to entertain a draft procedural resolution, you can go ahead.
Charles, do you have anything?
For the board's consideration tonight, a draft approval resolution.
That's right.
You mean, you have to hear from the public?
Yeah.
Oh.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on this application? None, then I'd move to close the public hearing. Our motion, second, all those in favor are opposed. Stand your motion carries. Now we'll go to the draft procedural resolution.
So, draft resolution by Richard DeMona Matthews, Site Plan Approval under Towne of Chapter 125 for demolition of the addition and replacement of new addition, including placement of the existing heat pump and heat pumps relocated as part of the addition in District 95, Home Rose Progress Road in the RC 5 zoning district. Reaffirm the action is type two under secret, for which board name, environmental file review is not required. Based upon the due submitted information, finding the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the site plan approval, finding the proposed work and intended use is consistent with Chapter 125, and approving the application of listed materials and elevations to the Reverend's Pot dated June 6, 2024, and authorizing the planning board to adjourn stamp beside the above side of the site plan upon the satisfaction of those three conditions. We will also add in here that with respect to demolition permit, the planning board will approve the demolition permit for the purposes of taking down the addition. And taking this action, the planning board further authorize the town's zoning enforcement officer, zoning administrator, and or building inspector to issue the required permits. And we want to note that any plan sketches or other materials submitted in the town are right back building department for any required permits, including a CO or certificate of completion must match the material approved by the planning board. Any submissions to the building department that include changes to the planning board for plans or materials are subject to rejection and/or requirement for re-submission to the planning board for reapproval as determined by and at the discretion of the town's zoning enforcement officers, zoning administrator, and or the building inspector.
And the motion. Second, I can, I call the board to Delise, I, John?
Aye.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Aye.
I love my life. Good luck.
Thank you.
May I say thank you?
Oh, no. You gotta start from the beginning.
First of all, I want to thank the board.
It's a gutter bed.
Well, it's good, man. I want to thank the board for being cooperative with us. We really did intend to do the right thing from the get-go. But the thing that was particularly surprising was when I first met with the Matthews last year, I asked them, "Folks, are there any historic designations on your house?" And they said, "No," because there is no state and there's no federal designation. And they did not know about the local designation that was established in 2009. Anyone that's on that list needs to get a letter and notification from the town that they have this condition. Because if we had known it from the get-go, we would have... We didn't find out until I submitted the plans to the building department, and then all of a sudden, everything came to a screeching halt. So that's the only thing that I would request. This is not the board's responsibility, but it's up to the supervisor or whoever handles these things. People should be made aware if they're on these lists, so that they know for the future. That's all.
Thank you. The second public hearing for this evening is... Thank you, good luck with the project. We'll be watching it from the road. The second public hearing this evening is David Rippon and John O'Keefe, 73 Old House Road Site Planning, Special Use Department, and a huge vacuum that's going to fence the scene.
Hi, I'm David Rippon, 73 Old House Road. As a reminder, we, incidentally, also didn't realize our house is historic for the town. It's not on the national estate register, but it is an old house. We did our renovations with a permit from the town, but it was because we put in five compressors for mini-splits on the exterior, it required a separate permit and also a special use permit for the, like, for the screen, because we chose to put fencing instead of landscaping. So in the past month, we did have a site visit from Tom and from Craig. Also, George and I think Ben came from the C A B, and we got a correction sent a response from Warren at APAC. And so I think that's where we're at. We're looking at, we're looking at sufficient to this.
Nope, no comments from last time. Talked about it again, primarily work sense or preservation sensitivity to property and name of the property.
Site visit report?
No, it's, yeah, Tom.
Okay.
Do you want to go?
I drove by the property three times. Got the speed limit in place about 20 months. Because the fences are so far back from the front, you really don't notice, you know? You're looking at everything else and they're just back there. And then you get up to them and they're effective in hiding mechanical equipment. So I don't have any problems with them.
I have somewhat contrasting perception of that. But as was said in the earlier application, I don't see that there's a significant impact from C A B standpoint that there's a significant deleterious effect on the historic resource or any of the cultural or community of the town. I do, I would very much rather see vegetative screening than the fence. I will contend that the fence is reversible and is connected to the house not with a poster or a pilaster, but just with a nail or a soda. It would be, it's not, it's not like you have to demolish anything or cut siding to put it there. So it's low impact in that respect. Being the exposure of the weather boards are different from one of the siding of the house, which helps to distinguish it. I do perceive a little bit of a jugular appearance that's not really native to the house because the, that's sticking out. And I almost wish it would be painted a contrasting color rather than the same color as the siding. But it's not incumbent on me to design your project. But it is up to me in this board to ensure that any measures that you take don't detract from the historic or senior forms of the, of the. It's, the fence is already built and is already in place. And I think there would be minimal benefit for changes to be made from what it, from what it is. It does, from various angles, conceal the condensing units, which are very important mechanical features that are added to this old house. And we have to support that because we're walking into a warming future and we want to do as much as we can to make sure that we're being responsible. So I commend you for that. And I don't even think it would be that objectionable to see the condensing units on the side of the house. I don't think that they're that distracting. It's the kind of thing that we do need to kind of get used to seeing because they're appearing more and more. And, you know, like a telephone box or a cable running into the house is just one of those things that we get used to seeing. I wouldn't insist on any changes being made to what was previously known.
That's the difference, this is historic house, so that's why the screen is required. Most houses wouldn't require this. Wouldn't be a much achievement.
Well, I, I think you're correct that it is stated in the town code, but I believe the town code also says that it's a security.
Third, any board members, comments? Questions? Anyone from the public? Just have a copy of this application. May I have a motion to pause the public hearing? So, second, all those in favor? Aye. Who's abstentions? A draft approval resolution here?
I have a draft approval resolution for the board's consideration tonight for the application by David Kupan and John DeMona. Site plan special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, respectively for site plan special use term for installation of heat pumps associated with R A 10. Reaffirming the actions type two under secret with respect to the site, so with respect to the special use permit, finding that the defense work consistent with general standards for special use permits is set forth in Town Code Chapter 125 and granting a request of special use permit. This should pass site plan approval. And with respect to the site plan approval, finding the work intended use consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, approving the application inclusive of the materials in the site plan by John Decker dated May 7, 2024. Authorizing the planning board chair to stamp the signed above cited site plan on the app with satisfaction of the three conditions below. Taking this action, the planning board authorizes the zoning enforcement officer administrator or building inspector to issue required permits. And as I've stated once, we'll go through it again. Extension of all materials that are submitted to the building department need to be the same as what's been provided to the planning board where you.
And a motion? Second?
Sorry.
Almost twelve, all four.
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Please, aye.
I know that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for volunteering for the planning board. Appreciate it. Thanks.
The third public hearing this evening was to be my tree service. We've gone site plan and use of current offices and medical office. Have been, we received a request from the applicant to continue the public hearing until September 3rd. Is it still health department related? They are still waiting for information from the health department. That's the purpose of their request. So may I have a motion to continue the public hearing until September 3rd? All those in favor? Opposed, extension of motion carries. That brings us to the last public hearing this evening, and that is a rock ledge. 492 Akron Football Road. Site plan approval, special use permit and wetlands permit for condo units. I'm recused. And it is recusing herself. The applicant's representatives are here. And I don't know if you have anything new that you wish to present, but one of the main purposes of this evening's public hearing is to hear from Mr. Mathia, who's here with us, who was the traffic consultant. But I'll let you begin if you have some things you want to say.
Nothing new at this time. Proceed with the public's.
Okay. So just to remind ourselves, we're far. Mr. Mathia was asked to review the traffic report that was prepared by Creighton Manning. He has done so and he's here this evening to share his report with us. And then we will also proceed to respond to questions that have been raised by neighbors or others interested in the project. So Mr. Mathia will be presenting to the planning board and then he will address those questions. And then at that point, unless there's something else that needs to come, we boys will open it up to public comment. Good evening, thank you.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you very much for having me here. I'm just going to follow through a letter that I wrote that's my responses to the comments from a pair of letters that the town has received that forwarded to me with some comments and questions.
Are you going to do that first or are you going to refresh our memory about your original report?
And qualifications.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do that. I could follow up with the original report.
Okay, well, can you introduce yourself and tell us about your background and your qualifications?
I'm Steve Mathia, a licensed professional engineer in New York State. I've been licensed for a little over 40 years now in New York State. And I specialize in traffic, act studies and issues related to access, safety and parking, both for existing and proposed land developments. The planning board retained me to review the proposed rock ledge development on Akron Football Road. Rock ledge, as we know, is a 36 unit townhouse project with access to Akron Hook. There were a series of traffic studies repaired for the project by Creighton Manning engineers at an engineering firm at Waltham. In my previous June correspondence, which we can cover in the night, I reviewed those traffic studies that were submitted to the town on behalf of Rockledge. But my role in this is as a consultant to the planning board. For some background on the, again, I have over 40 years of experience in the traffic engineering field. And I've conducted many impact studies as well as reviews of studies done by other firms. Just a small sample of some of the studies I've done for residential projects. All of them in New York. Rustic Pines, a 19 unit subdivision in LeHorsin. perennial park, a 67 unit townhouse project in Fallsford. Woodbridge Commons, an 83 unit seasonal duplex project in Woodbridge. Project known as Golf Lakes, a 44 unit apartment complex with a small amount of commercial space in Waywayanda. And a larger development in Sullivan Cameron, the Sackett Lake Resort Residential. A 199 unit residential development that's in the town of Thompson just happened on the sell. A small sample of the reviews I've done of other studies. Locust Hill right here in Rhinebeck, the 88 unit multifamily project. 76 North Broadway, 57 unit condominium and school project in Irvington, New York. Newstone Commons, a 47 unit condominium complex in Kingston, similar to what we have here in Rhinebeck. Gasland, an 88 pump, 2,000 square foot gas station with a convenience store in the town of Lockwood. Quick Check, something much larger than a small mom and pop gas station, 16 pumps, with a 6,000, 700 square foot convenience store. That was in the town of Montgomery. Vassar Inn Institute, Institute in Poughkeepsie, which is a lodging, the in suggest and seminar facility related to the college. And the project called Terramore of the Sabres, a mixed use, what they called lamping site, glamorous camping. This is the terminology. And that was in Sabres. So now I'll address the two letters that we received. First one from Barry Sherrod, dated July 10, 2024, item one. Mr. Sherrod's estimate of the project's site generated vehicle trip generation is reasonable, although it requires some clarification and an impartial assessment of the potential impacts of those trips. Assessing increases in traffic simply by looking at the percent increase is not always the appropriate method to do that. While stating that traffic on Akron Road will at least double is accurate, it's somewhat misleading since the existing traffic on that roadway is less than 20 trips during the highest peak hour during the day. Instead, it is important to traffic engineering to determine what impacts on existing conditions can be expected due to that increase. Now, for traffic engineers, the two predominant measures of impacts are called level of service analysis and capacity analysis. Level of service is based on the amount of delay that is experienced on an average by vehicles waiting at a stop sign or at a red light at a signaling intersection. And capacity is just the ability of a roadway to handle a certain volume of traffic, usually over the course of an hour or over the course of a day. Based on the existing trip patterns, Creighton Manning estimated that, as I said, there'd be 24 new trips on Akron Road. And that about 70% of that new traffic would be distributed towards the south, towards Permost Hill Road. And the remaining 30% to the north towards Burbank. In both cases, I found that those estimates are reasonable. Even if there was a more balanced distribution, say a 50-50 split from the site, most traffic leaving the site happened when it turned left to go north on Akron Hook. Now they have to go south. The increase towards the south would be even less than 18, about 12 trips. And again, that, that impact, that increase would be. So he asks, while he estimated the trip increase on Akron Road south of the project may double, it assesses the potential impact of the 18 new trips during peak hour represents an increase in volume. And that little or no impact on traffic conditions, both delay and capacity on Akron Hook. And even less impact as that traffic disperses into the surrounding roadways. Gets down to Permost Hill, somebody turns left, somebody turns right, somebody goes straight ahead on Akron Hook. Those volumes get distributed further and less as far from the back sources. Just as an explanation for trip generation and the source, the estimated peak hour trip generation is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or I T E, reference, it's called the Trip Generation Manual, it's the 11th edition, which is the latest version. The Trip Generation Manual is a compilation of many different types of land uses, including residential uses. The I T provides over 200 examples of counts at entrances to a land use like the single family or multi-family residential units, both on a daily basis and during peak hours. In, yeah, as far as the third item in Mr. Sherrod's other, some of those issues were addressed in the first two comments. Or my first two responses. Now, I have one before, Mr. Sherrod stated that as traffic volume doubles, so too does the probability of traffic slash pedestrian accidents and incidents. Well, it is generally believed that increased traffic could increase the risk of accidents. However, that relationship is more significant when there's heavier traffic congestion, heavier volume roadways. For example, high volumes of traffic congestion in roadway many times leads to drivers becoming impatient when they're waiting at a stop sign. So they would accept a shorter gap in traffic. They may drive faster of speed or run a red light or stop sign because they need to make up time they feel they lost in congested condition. This is not the case on Akron Road and Permost Hill. As these, these roadways are not congested and are not high volume roadways. I did comment on the situation where Akron Hook and some of the other roadways do have both vertical and horizontal curves where additional signage and speed reduction recommendations are or should be considered. And I also encourage the developer to consider what would be needed to keep all of a possible walkway along his frontage on Akron, Akron, Akron Road to keep it off the pavement, possibly widening the shoulder or putting some of that walkway on his property to provide such an alignment to the tactical view. Second letter from David Weiner and some of his neighbors in the letter dated July 14, item one. I really shouldn't comment or won't comment on the comment that the town's intent regarding the town's intent for a comprehensive plan and its guidelines for development in the town. My review of traffic issues specifically for the planning board. And it was for a development scenario proposed by the applicant that meets the requirements of the town's RC5 zoning program. I considered or I concluded that Rockledge, the Rockledge project or something similar to that would be the most likely type and size and therefore traffic generator for a development on that site. Item two, my review commented on the potential for additional pedestrian and bicycle traffic generated by the development and felt that initially a lot of that pedestrian and bicycle traffic would be within the site. It's a large 100 plus acre site. And that, and that some of it may eventually get out onto the adjacent streets. But that the applicant had suggested additional pedestrian warning signs and that should be considered by the town. And as I mentioned before, the walkway along the frontage of the site on Akron Hook was something that should be, continue to be considered by the town. Item three, analyzing the cumulative traffic impacts is an appropriate method for traffic study. So after, I'm not aware of current potential developments or other developments in the area that would add traffic to the area roadways, including Akron Hook, Permost and Akron Road. Item four, the cited I T E data for trip generation. To be noted that it does include all types of trips, not just vehicle trips associated with individual homes. It does include trips made by delivery trucks, mail trucks and other service vehicles that would be using the roadways during the peak hours and other hours throughout the day. Note that additional deliveries to new homes in the area would be made by many of the same vehicles that are already serving the neighborhood, like to postal service, C P S, Amazon and so on. Additional stops to existing and new homes would simply be added to the drivers' existing routes through the area, not necessarily added to the traffic. routes through the area, not necessarily added to the traffic. Item five, the automated traffic recorder that was set at a location here, the project entrance was there primarily to collect volume data, in that regard, its results were accurate and acceptable. As far as the speed side of Ackerhook Road, an eight-fifth percentile speed of forty miles per hour was used by the applicant, Creighton Manning, in their site distance analysis. An eight-fifth percentile speed means that most traffic travels at or below that speed, which was found to be forty miles per hour. Keep in mind, the speed limit on those roadways is thirty-five, possibly, miles per hour. Even at the slightly higher speed, all site distance requirements were met or exceeded. So in my opinion, and in accordance with the state requirements for site distance studies, forty miles per hour speed was acceptable for the analysis. For items six, seven, and eight, I respectfully disagree with the characterization of the analysis that I reviewed, as one being for suburban lane arteries. The roadways in the Rockledge area would best be described as a new description that was developed by ASHTO, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, as a quote "rural town context." The rural town context is stated in there in their policy as quote "the rural town context applies to roads in rural areas located within developed communities. Rural towns generally have low development densities with diverse land uses, on-street parking and sidewalks in some locations, and small building setbacks. Rural towns may include residential neighborhoods, schools, industrial facilities, commercial and commercial main business districts." In spite of the ASHTO description, the analysis of traffic impacts, in particular, a level of service analysis, is based on other criteria, not just that. Level of service is based, as I mentioned, on controlled delay, the amount of time waiting at a stop sign or a red light before proceeding. Calculated level of service is independent of the type of roadway, except for, when an exception is a central business district in a core of the RHC, and that's not the case in RHC here. In my review, it was stated that I wasn't considering local concerns, it was unjustified. I would say flatly, all concerns about safety should be considered, as was the case in our review. And when I looked at the traffic at the accident history, those facts regarding accidents in surrounding roadways, combined with the minimal increase in traffic volumes anticipated for the proposed development, I assessed that there was no reason to expect a negative impact on safety, and I continued to believe that. Now, item ten, the three-year accident history was characterized as having a significant part of the COVID pandemic. That's not really the case in the three years that I looked at, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we were essentially out of the pandemic timeframe. Also, the latest available timeframe alluded, included what was alluded to in the comment, the last two years of growth in the area, and it's also the generally accepted practice in evaluating accident histories. Item eleven, respectfully, it cited regionalized accounting data in terms of safety, really does not apply to the local Rockledge experience. Again, I did not conduct any of the studies for the proposed Rockledge development, as those were done by Creighton Manning. However, as I noted in my review, the inn, which was in the original application, inn and accommodations for group events, like parties and wedding receptions, were both eliminated from the plan. And keep in mind, at various times during the day, and various different days, an inn and a reception hall would have been significant sources of incremental traffic. That is, of course, if they were contained, in this case, they were not, they were both eliminated from the plan. Item thirteen, many other studies and reviews that I've conducted in the forty-plus years that I've been a professional traffic engineer, I concluded projects located in areas described as the rural town context. But I do have a lot of experience with areas like this, and projects in these types of areas. As far as population density is concerned, projects that I've worked on have ranged increases of density and population from odd to very low to moderate, depending on the size of the existing database. The comment looked at a very small area, restricted basically to a section of Ackerhook Road, but as the area widens, that percent increase in density and population will decrease. For example, in the town of Rhinebeck, in the village of Rhinebeck, combined, the population is about ten thousand three hundred. A thirty-six-unit townhouse development would considerably add maybe a hundred and forty-four new residents, or about a one-point-four percent increase in the population. Four is a pretty, four people per unit is kind of conservative, it's likely that the average is less than one. Item fourteen, regarding the ecosystem and other environmental issues, I would refer to the town's planner or other experts in that field to answer this question, but relative to traffic, I would say that I have conducted well over fifty traffic studies and reviews in Lower Hudson Valley, and over two hundred studies and reviews throughout the region in the last decade. Item fifteen, I respond to Mr. Sherman's comments in this letter. So that's my responses to the comments and questions. Do you want me to go back over the traffic?
I want to ask planning members if they have any questions at this point. No?
I just, first of all, thank you for the very code and clarifying comments that you made. Is there anything, because you've done this work throughout the Hudson Valley in a number of different communities, and one of the things that makes Rhinebeck not unique, but exceptional, is the fact that we have a train station, and it does give us very ready access to New York City. We don't know who's going to be living in these condos, but it's reasonable to assume that there should be some relationship with mass transit. And is there any sort of a concentrating effect that might have an impact on the traffic on these roads, for instance, the trips all being clustered around particular departures and arrival times, that might weight the results in one way or another?
Not specifically. The presence of mass transit and transport and traffic, that allows for options for residents of the town, existing and new residents, to have a different form of transportation available, that has to be saved in the Hudson Valley. To the extent that it's going to change the hourly, peak hour traffic volume that might be generated from this sort of situated residential development, not likely to change all that much. Some work-related trips would be trips to the train station. In the absence of the train station, they probably still be the same number of trips, but they'd be going directly to an office, or a school, or whatever place of work, place of visit, you'd be going to. So the presence of the mass transit wouldn't change the volume of traffic generated by this development. It would really, and they actually make the departure trip time spread out a little bit more, people needing to get to the train station for an earlier train because it's a long ride. But the analysis actually doesn't take that into account. It says, here's the peak hour, it's a commuter-related peak time, and all of the studies that I've seen has for residential subdivisions and multifamily and common townhouses and so on, all take into account various types and timing of trips.
Right. And so it's based more on a model of ninety-five, not so much the traffic distributed through, you know, one particular ten-minute period within the hour because the train is, you know, about to leave.
And I think the trains would spread that out a little bit.
Right. And is there anything that's new as far as the trends toward people working from home that is likely to have an alleviating effect on the traffic spend? Or does it, does that take in?
It would. The eleventh edition of the Trip Generation Manual was updated in twenty-twenty-one. As COVID was going on at the time, there may have been some studies that got into the analysis, and to the extent that working from home reduced trip generation, not, there's so much data out there for residential development. You've got to remember, residential development is the core trip. It's what's called the home-based trip. If you want to make any adjustments to the home-based trip, it's because something's happening at the other end, the office, the school, or the business, or the train station, those things change, but the home-based trip is basically the primary basic trip that's made. There's so much data that whatever the impacts of COVID may be and may continue to be, has not going to change what's in trip generation right now, in the ITE reference. It's still going to be what it was before COVID inception. It'll take a few more years before, if COVID has any effect, and there is a significant reduction in peak hour trip making because of people now are doing differently as far as working from home, and that changes the overall. That'll only start shaping up in the data in a few years. It's not, it's not difficult. Thank you.
Any other questions from planning members?
I have a question about this walkway that you mentioned across the road.
Yes.
I'm not aware of any town or in Rhinebeck that has an actual walkway along it. They all have shoulders, some are on foot lanes, some are without a steep bank, some of them go up the steep bank, and you walk in on the road with your dog or something, and a garbage truck comes, and you kind of get over there as far as you can and hang on tight while you go as far. So I'm not sure why we need to require them to put a walkway there, on one small section of the road, but that's just.
The way I understand it, the applicant proposed a walkway, you know, I don't want to call it a walkway, it's really a widened shoulder area that would take pedestrians or bicycles out of the travel lane, which is the lane where the cars are driving. It would, instead of being a one-foot shoulder or no shoulder at all, it would be enough width so that at least a person or two, side by side, could walk, and not be walking in the travel lane. It came to a point, if I understand their design, their draft design correctly, where there was some steep slope, you know, at the edge of the roadway where you couldn't really get a nice, flat, wider area, and they said, well, maybe we can scoop them out into the travel lane for that short distance, and that will turn to a wider shoulder, and keep them off the lane that way. What I'm asking is, why not go get that slope there, and what would it take to cut that slope out? Some excavation, you know, possibility, maybe that's something that, and we looked at, and the town would get from it, a wider shoulder, safer area for pedestrians and bicycles, and if the applicant is willing to undertake that, or to provide that, which is, I think, what was behind the idea to present that to the town in the first place, keep pursuing that, keep looking into that, and finding out whether that's something that they would still consider, and maybe make it a little bit more construction-related than they first presented.
Mr. Mafia asked you if you would like him to go back and go through his original show, I've forgotten the date, I apologize. Report. Does anyone wish for him to do that, or have you categorized yourself better enough to feel comfortable?
Excuse me, could you repeat that a little bit more loudly?
Sure. I'm sorry, I.
That's okay.
I was, Mr. Mafia has offered to go back and refresh our memory about his original report, which was initiated the questions that you submitted, and I was asking my colleagues if they felt comfortable enough with their memory of the report, that we could move on and open it up to public comment, or if you wished him to go back and answer anything about that initial report.
I think it would be repetitive.
Okay.
I read what was submitted, and I'm clear on what the statements are, and I think that any, the only thing we would like to repeat it for us to deliberate, the pros and cons.
Okay. So then, John, is there anything else we need to do at this point? We'll just then.
I do have copies of the written letter that I just based my comments on, so I can get them.
So how many copies?
I made eight copies.
Well, if you want to give those copies to Gretchen at this point, then members of the planning board can take a copy from her this evening, and Gretchen will see to it public that those comments are available as soon as Gretchen can get them up. So thank you for doing that. You might want to stay there because some of the questions may be directed at you, but let me begin by saying we're going to go into the, Mark and the applicant team, is there anything you wish to say at this point? Or I'm just going to take comment then? Is that okay with all of you?
Sir. I'm sorry.
Hi. I'm asking if you're ready for us to go. Is there anything you want to say at this point, or we'll just go into the public comment portion?
I mean, at this time, all the comments.
All right. I think you've been here long enough, you all know the rules, one at a time. Please look at your comments to the comments, not ones that you could have made, and I want to thank you very much for your time and the effort you put into this, I think we're all feeling much, I'm feeling better informed about the process myself. So I'll open it up now, if you want to come up and introduce yourself. Give your microphone, leave your name and address, please.
We've got two people coming. The ladies were. Julie's in, and I live on Stone Church Road. And. My question relates to question number four that I sent to Mr. Mafia, and that's about it wouldn't be a substantial increase in delivery trucks and service vehicles. And I just have a lot of trouble thinking that if thirty-six households were suddenly parked next to my house, that this would not bring a great deal of traffic for all the service needs that we all have today, for Amazon, and Prime, and all those good guys. So I just think it sort of belies credibility a little bit for me.
Hi. Hi, I'm David Weiner, and I'm with the three oh six Ackerhook Road, just the short route from the entrance to this development. I really appreciate the detailed responses, it would take some time, and perhaps you smile and nodding, but just a couple of things.
Can't hear you.
Is this thing on? Can you hear me now? Okay. I said thank you for all the detail that you've given, and I'd like to respond after looking at it in some detail. But a couple of high-level thoughts occurred to me, and you keep asking us not to repeat things we've said, but I don't care, some of them do, and it's been a little too. So I'm going to repeat some things I've said before. For example, there was a comment about the walkway, and the developer raised the issue of putting a walkway up. Said they really couldn't do it on their property, and maybe we could do it on our property. Completely missing the point, that the issue here is not about cars, it's about people, people on horses, people in puppies, and people on bicycles. And I haven't heard those issues responded to. And I haven't heard those issues responded to. I gave you a detailed discussion of all the choke points where a couple of cars, and there are more of them speeding. And if you look at the traffic study, there are a number of cars going quite fast on that street regardless of the media. So if my wife is walking with her cane on the road, or my neighbor Karen is riding his horse, and a couple of vehicles come fast, where do they go? Those issues do not seem to be addressed. It's a matter of quality of life, it's a matter of safety. But it's also this issue of looking at the walkway on the front edge of the property, that's not the issue. It's all the roads and all of the narrow areas where there's really no place to step off, especially where there are hills and curves at the same time. Now, every time we raise the issue about cumulative traffic, people look at us like, well, this is just one project. But we know there were two recent, two major projects that would have increased traffic. There's construction going on. You're a planning committee that should be planning for the community, not looking at one project as if it's a discrete unit separate from everything else going on in the local area. So I think that it's perfectly reasonable to talk about how this contributes to the cumulative effect that's going on in the community. Then, I really feel that I look at this report and the reviewer refers to the fact that there have been a handful of accidents on three roads. Yeah, when you look at data that is presented on incidents, it usually refers to it in a scope of 100,000 residents and you talk about numbers in that category. So what the experience has been in three years on three roads is not really telling you what the increased risk is. That requires a very different kind of study. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Linda Kay didn't receive any free aggregate. I just had a few questions which are, you know, probably mostly from the planning board to consider responding at some point. Has the C A B conducted a review of the Rockledge Road's kind of building yet?
The C A B... Louder, please. Have they conducted a review? Would C A B have provided any indication or recommendations to the planning board? Certainly, yes.
In 2017, I believe the C A B made a visit. But the C A B is very recently reconstituting. It was down to just a couple of members.
So, but the plan has been amended and changed drastically since then. So don't we need an updated, this is, what, seven years ago? And there's, I don't believe that other than C A B, I don't know if there's any report, but it wouldn't matter because it's a different plan and the sidewalk issue in and then out, the issue with respect to not having a shoulder on many parts of the road and the choke points and other environmental-related things. For instance, the recent 2024 Hesamia report, whether, yeah, I don't know whether the planning board has addressed or applied that to this particular development, which I know the town board instructed that the planning board needs to use it for that. So we're interested to hear what the planning board might be able to do in terms of maybe a session of, call it whatever kind of session you want, but something that would really inform us as to how the environmental issues are being addressed and habitats and everything else which are critical, not just to, you know, us and people living in the immediate vicinity, but the larger, sort of, Rhinebeck resident population. And I was curious whether Mr. Mafia, if I'm pronouncing correctly, whether he considered the fact that each of the townhouses has two, it's a two-car garage, it's not a one-car, it's got the, I think, the pneumatic riser, and whether or not the numbers of vehicles just from the residence alone, let alone service vehicles. And, you know, we all get so many things delivered, it's kind of scary sometimes. I forgot what they even ordered, why are they delivering again? I'm sure that happens to everybody. I just think the frequency will be so intensive. I don't know that his report included numbers that would really inform all of us as to what that real impact could be, not just how many times, you know, a car might get to a stop sign or things like that. I think, you know, they're really qualitative issues that, you know, we all who live in a small town, you know, whether it's the village or outside Lower Archer Town area, understand that there are impacts that might not appear on a traffic study report, but are really essential in terms of the quality of life that we live and that we're entitled to maintain. There were also four questions in Mr. Weyer's letter to the planning board, questions 16 through 19. And, you know, they mostly address what are the sort of effects in terms of cost to Rhinebeck and residents of Rhinebeck, you know, if the road had to be widened, if there are eminent domain issues that arise, if the town itself gets dragged into litigation by whoever with respect to how Acro Hook Road might be impacted negatively, which Mr. Schreiber made very clear that would be the case, and the degradation to the road during, which should be a very long, maybe two years or more. I'm not sure what the actual timeframe. I don't know that we've gotten a really clear timeframe from the developer as to how long large construction vehicles will be going back and forth on Acro Hook Road and Primrose and Burger and some of the smaller roads, Hybrity, et cetera. So I think that's just something where we'd like to know if the board's gonna take that into consideration and perform an analysis or address it with the town board. I just don't know the mechanics of that, but I think as, you know, taxpayers, we really need to understand not just the short-term but long-term ramifications that may result, that maybe we aren't aware of in this moment, we're thinking about, but will occur as any sort of development, no matter the size, eventually, you know, gets approved by the planning board. So those are my questions, which I know will take time to respond to. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir? Hand up there on the mobile.
Hi, there. Karen Wells, 467 Acro Hook Road. The first question is addressed to Mr. Mafia. So in your report, I was curious whether or not you would recommend an updated count of traffic, given the change in the area and other developments since COVID? And also, I think you mentioned that the traffic count is relative specifically to multifamily housing as opposed to single-family dwellings. And you point out that multifamily housing typically is in a more suburban or urban area where there is a degree of walkability and access to transportation, the units are smaller and the number of cars are fewer. So I was wondering if we should ask for a recalculation, given the single-family homes, which is basically when these are only attached to each other? So those were on the update front. I mean, the other thing was, you point out in your report that there are no very relevant or current studies for the impact of increased traffic, traffic on country roads like Acro Hook Road. And so, given this, what sort of pragmatic study would you suggest that the town conduct to estimate impact for these roads and any others in our town that are under threat increased traffic, not if they pertain to capacity and delays, which are not really country road issues, but on the character and the recreational use of these roads? And the last point I'll make is, which Mr. Mafia rightly raises in his report, that if you move into an area with open space, you might expect some development. And you surely would, but if you bought your house in a five-acre zoning neighborhood, you would expect five-acre zoning of the new homes that were to be constructed, not homes at two and a half acres. So I think that, you know, particularly in the context of the comprehensive plan in 2009, decreasing, increasing the block size from three acres to five acres emphasizes the town's desire to keep the density low and the reasonable expectation that people would be expecting five-acre zoning. They might not have gone into depth and determined that multifamily housing with a special use permit could be an eventuality, but at least they would think that five-acre zoning was the expectation and that's what the decision is going to reflect. Thank you. And Karen.
Do you want to, did you take me over the questions?
Yes.
So why don't we get all the questions out and then I'll let him respond. John's over there, yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Matthew Porter, 1 Kippsburg Drive. As you know, historic preservation is my main job to Rockledge, so I have some questions, if you would inform me, please. My question is about the relation of the Rockledge project to the New York State's Historic Preservation Office, SHIPO. Has the planning board received a SHIPO approval for Rockledge?
Well, I believe that the applicant's working directly with SHIPO. Is that correct?
Okay. So in other words, approval as a community, it's in works. It's an application.
With communication issue.
Great. So is it required? Does approval from the state require for the Rockledge project to go forward?
My understanding is that there's kind of two levels of this, correct me if I'm wrong. SHIPO is involved in terms of tax credits, is that correct? Oh, yes, SHIPO has to be involved at that level. Were they not, were this just privately-owned residence and someone was looking to make changes or additions or whatever? SHIPO would not necessarily have to approve because there would be no tax credit. So this relationship here is, yes, SHIPO has to agree to the proposal because of that level.
Yeah, and from my own perspective, as someone who has a career in historic preservation, is very much interested in the preservation of architecture in the town of Rhinebeck, it's very reassuring that the applicant is pursuing a tax credit because that comes with the provision that they work with the SHIPO and follow the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic buildings. So full stop. I mean, if that provision were not in place, the town would have very little leverage over what types of things aesthetically and historically the applicant could do to the property. So he's getting a benefit, a tax benefit, but that comes at the exchange of following nationally-recognized standards for the treatment of important historic buildings and historic landscapes as well.
That's a good system. It's, yes, and I'm glad to know. So what is the usual sequence? Does a SHIPO assessment precede a planning board evaluation of the project or follow a SHIPO approval?
Well, we're going through the process now.
I know, but I sometimes feel like this may be out of sequence. For example, if the planning board came to an understanding that this project had a reasonable chance of success and said, we want to approve it, but then SHIPO does not, then what happens?
I don't know, John.
They don't get the tax credit.
They don't get the tax credit.
But we've already applied, we have, see, we applied for its second, number two approval and, or, I say commenting on our work, I say commenting that.
If we were, my understanding, if somebody can correct me, if we were to approve something and SHIPO did not, as Mr. Blaken said, we'd not get the tax credit. It's in their best interest to be working, being involved with this.
So then it would be up to Mr. Blaken if he wanted to go forward with the project without the tax credit, if the town was willing to say yes to the plan, but the state was not.
I think that's all hypothetical.
Yeah.
It is hypothetical, but my question is about sequence. Sometimes I think if this is a question before the state of whether or not this will be recognized as a legitimate historical preservation project.
The New York State Office of Historic Preservation, Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation, has a website that details the process. It's much better than we can here.
I've studied it. And as you know, as you know, I have...
But you're asking the question, so why are you looking to us for clarification?
Craig, I think there are two issues going on. So one of them is, what's the responsibility of the town? The town's responsibility is to utilize the town zoning code, and our responsibility is to reach out to SHIPO to ask them for comments, and they have, I think, 60 days or something to respond, or less than they're gonna respond. That's the responsibility the town planning board has from SHIPO. When we're talking about tax credits, the planning board does not take into account the financial impacts of projects. And so the tax credits are a completely separate issue. However, because they're doing what Craig says, is they're being held to a higher standard, potentially because they're being reviewed by SHIPO. As they've been interviewed here, there are people up there who do this all the time or taking a look at the design. So it's really two different things. We don't get involved with the tax credits here at the planning board. We just request that SHIPO to take a look at it and then they provide comments back within the 60 days, whatever the timeline is, and then we continue forward. Tax credits are related, but a separate issue.
John?
Thank you. This is Ben O'Leary.
I just want to add a clarification, John Lyons, a counsel to the planning board. I just want to add a clarification with regard to the gentleman's question about sequencing. The planning board is involved at the present time in conducting environmental review pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. That is a review that typically happens in parallel with reviews that are being done by other state agencies, and that's the case here. And I also believe that there's been input to the planning board from SHIPO in connection, comments in connection with the environmental review. So the tax, you're correct that the tax credit piece of this is separate from what the planning board's doing, but that's why these reviews are happening in parallel right
I'm Patty Lanto. I live at 225 Road with my husband, Michael. Property has been in the family for 60 years. I just counted. I've never counted before. Thank you for requesting Mr. Mafia's review of traffic. I have a question about what seems to be a premise in his analysis. Our focus as neighbors has always been the safety of the neighborhood people walking on Acro Hook, on Gley, on Burger, on Primrose. His analysis of safety seemed to say that it isn't really an issue because all the bike riding and pedestrian traffic will all be within the Rockledge development. So it's just a non-separate, to me, I don't quite understand his response. And if this is a premise of his safety analysis, I'm concerned about the validity of it. I also have some comments about... I also have some comments about environmental comments that I'd like to make. Should I hold those until the traffic is over, or should I make those now?
I think you connected now and I want to ask that Mr. Mafia to respond to the traffic.
In November of 2021, New York State added the right to a healthful environment to the state constitution. This guarantees to its citizens the inalienable right to clean air, clean water, and a healthy environment. In the Rhinebeck Town Code, Chapter 120 concerning wetlands, we are told it's the policy of the town of Rhinebeck to preserve, protect, and conserve fresh order wetlands and the benefits derived therefrom, to prevent their despoilation and destruction, and to regulate development in wetlands and their adjacent upland buffer in order to secure the multiple benefits derived therefrom, consistent with the economic, social, and environmental welfare of the community. Duchess County Waste Flare Authority has stated to the planning board that the testing of ethylene only includes FEDIS permit labeled contaminants. You, the planning board members, have been made aware that untreated chemicals harmful to the environment and humans will be present in the ethylene. The proposed development has a significant adverse impact on the environment. In this case, what we do not know can hurt us. These contaminants cause cancer and hormone imbalance, as just two examples of the problems that they create. Please issue a positive declaration requiring an environmental impact statement and the associated scoping. Thank you.
Thank you. Start off, I apologize, I didn't get everybody's name when you made comments. As far as the deliveries, truck deliveries in the area, as I mentioned, they like opening comments. Additional deliveries to both existing and the new houses and development in the area would generally be handled by the same vehicles that are making trips through the neighborhood today. In other words, the United States Postal Service, the mailman, he comes in his car, he delivers mail to houses on Acro hook and Primrose and so on. He would just divert into Rockledge with the mail for those houses. But it's the same postal vessel that's making those deliveries. That would apply also to UPS guy and the Amazon deliveries. Trucks were loaded at the distribution facility with packages for a neighborhood, and that eventually would include 36 units at Rockledge. There may be an additional truck or two, but there's usually enough capacity in the vehicles that Amazon and UPS uses to make their deliveries. And all they do is store the additional packages in the back of van, take off and do the deliveries in the neighborhood without a significant increase, if at all, of traffic, of truck delivery vehicles. The walkway along Acro hook road is something that the developer offered to the town as a way of providing some area saving for pedestrians along at least his frontage. And that's really all he can control. You know, narrow shoulders on Primrose or on Acro Hill and, you know, other roadways in the area are not something that he can control. He can offer something along his frontage and possibly even, you know, within his property. And that's something that he can control, and he's made that offer. And I recommend that the town continue to have a dialogue with him about that. Yes, and we do do our traffic studies based on cumulative road traffic in the area. We want to know, in addition to the 36 units at Rockledge, what else is happening in the area that's going to add traffic to the roadways? Right now, there doesn't appear to be anything on boards that looks like it's going to add traffic to Acro Hill and Primrose, Acro Hill and so on. Other developments that may have happened in the recent past were in fact included in the counts that Craig Manning did, and they're updated counts, which is another response that I would make to another comment about updated counts. They did do recent counts that now include traffic from the other newer developments in the area. They also look at just a background group percent increase to account for developments that they don't know about yet, or just in general where there may be some increases in traffic on the adjacent streets because of other things going on, not necessarily any new developments occurring. The accident experience... We... No one can predict an accident. That's why they call it accident. It's unpredictable, it's unknown it's going to happen. I've already stated that with the increase in traffic volume, there's always an increased risk of an accident. But here in this area of the town, particularly on these low-volume roadways, Acro hook, Primrose, and so on, it's just not the condition out there that would raise the red flag that when you increase that traffic, you're going to have, you know, a similar increase in the probability of accidents. It's always going to be there, you never know. From year to year, it may fluctuate. One year, you may have, you know, three, four, five accidents at a location, following year, two or three are done. And I've seen that many, many times in accident studies that I've done or reviewed where the accident history fluctuates over time. It's not something that grows linearly. It's not something that stays consistent. It's an accident, it's unpredictable, and it fluctuates up and down. Two-car garage question. It is true that a lot of condominiums nowadays, you know, are as big as in terms of the number of vehicle ownership, that two cars, sometimes three cars. And that isn't limited to just single-family houses on big lots. Thing is, the IT trip generation information includes all of those different types. Bedroom count is another, is another item, too. In addition to car ownership, bedroom count is sometimes applicable to trip generation. But IT doesn't say, doesn't base it on how many bedrooms you have in the building. It's based on how many units you have, and it assumes a mix of bedrooms. It assumes a mix of car ownership, one car, two car, or three car. Also, just because there are two cars in a household doesn't mean that both cars make a trip at the same time during the same hour. Sometimes somebody gets up a little earlier. We talked about it on Adapted the Train Station. And that's another trip, but it happens at 7 o'clock in the morning. The regular 9:00 to 5:00 work trip takes place later on and not in the same hour. So, and again, the IT trip rates take that into consideration. Construction vehicles. The applicant can talk to this probably with his own contractor when you get to it, but in my experience, a large site like this, contractor, when they're ready to build it, bring the larger construction vehicles to the site, the back roads, the bulldozers and so on, they leave them on the site until the construction is done. Contractor vehicle, contractors, the laborers who work on the site, they'll park right on the site, it's plenty of room on the site to park. Whatever happens as far as the construction is concerned, it's only temporary. They'll be out there doing that work until, you know, the units are built, and then they go away. The hauling of soil and debris and so on is usually a problem on a smaller site when you've got a lot of grading to do, you've got to excavate, or you have to bring in a lot of material because you have to do a lot of fill. On a larger site like this, it's probably a balancing of the excavation and the fill. So all they're going to do is move dirt around, basically. They're not going to be exploiting a lot of material in or hauling a lot of extra material out of the soil. So because of the size of the site, that type of truck traffic is probably going to be limited. New accounts. The applicant's traffic engineer, Craig Manning, did indeed do new traffic accounts because some of the data that they collected in 2017, 2016, 2017, at the beginning of the project, was, would have been, in my opinion, stale at that time and in need of updating. So they did new counts, I think in 2022. So they do have new counts. Those new counts include traffic from other developments that they have been going on, other increases in traffic. So they're up to date, basically, with the traffic. Multifamily versus single-family, trip generation at that size, there's very little difference between single-family and townhouses. It gets to be a bigger difference when the size of the development in terms of the number of doggies increases. As far as safety with pedestrians and bicycles, what I said was that a lot of the new bicycle and pedestrian trips generated by the site would probably take advantage of the larger site before vetting out up to the adjacent roadways. I'm not saying that all of that pedestrian or that there wouldn't be any pedestrian or bicycle traffic generated by the site. Would, some of it may eventually be in some of the adjacent streets and roadways, but in general, with a site that size and with, I think, the layout that the applicant's proposing, there'd be plenty of pathways and opportunity to make the nature within the site, not go out on the side. I'm saving this one for last because it's the most difficult one to answer. As traffic engineer, we have to deal with facts and figures. The level of service, which is based on delay, the capacity, which is based on the width of the roadway, other physical characteristics. The other issue, that you have to match up against quality of life. Quality of life is a subjective issue. You know, I had a neighbor who built a house next to mine when 20 years ago I had a chance to buy that lot, the empty lot next to my house. When he went out to build, it was like, what are you going to do now? You know, that lot used to be my side yard, sort of. My kids played there, and I threw my little grass putts on that. It's a situation where that's the fact of the area you live in. That's the fact of that empty lot next to my house. It's a buildable lot. And my expectation was, hey, it'd be great if you stayed in that empty lot because it benefited my family, but it wasn't mine. And it wasn't mine to decide how to build or not to build. In this case, you know, there's a large empty lot, 25 acres or so. Developer is proposing a sort of conservation use of it where 36 units are in a smaller area, not clear cutting the entire amount of 20 acres just to do the same with the houses. So, you know, in that regard, it's a development that is not, you know, out of scale or scope for the proposal. And it's something that's not a surprise, it shouldn't be a surprise to people. So I think that's...
Any questions?
I have a question. My name is Tia Sisper.
Yes, thank you.
Tia Sisper, I live on Acro hook, Route 26. I'm 28 in September, and I take an hour walk every day on Acro hook road. I use a cane. It's nicely dangerous to you to suggest that the developer might put in some kind of pathway to his property, but I'm next to his property, it'll be seven minutes, and I won't put out. Car isn't by, that's fine, I understand, I just step on the shoulder. But it worries me if this road begins to attract a lot, much more traffic. I bought this house, I'm sorry that, you know, we didn't have foresight to find a lot of nice new houses, but when we bought our house, we were aware of that five-acre zoning rule. And that's one reason we bought that particular house, that one reason we didn't buy a house somewhere else. And so I think we did show some foresight, and this developer is asking for an exception to that. And I don't really consider that favorable or acceptable. Thank you.
I do have one question here, Jim. Just like some clarification about adaptive reuse and how that relates to five-acre zoning, or right that we have, you know, conservation subdivisions, right, that sort of like the rules get shifted? Because I know we're talking a lot about the five-acre zoning, and if I'm correct, which I thought my question was like... But then there are properties that by nature, even regardless, they will function under a different set of scenarios. All right?
There can be, but that's not what's happening. That's not what's happening with this project. So I put in my memo, probably two years ago now, number 20, where we put in the calculation of exactly how this density has been brought about. So if you take the 100, this is just a rough number, 125 acres, you subtract out almost 60 acres of land for natural features, including wetlands, wetland buffer, steep slopes over 25%. That leaves you with 66 and a half acres of land. Under the types of units that are being proposed by the developer, not single-family detached homes, but single-family attached homes, he permitted four units under the RC-5 for the first five acres of land. So if you take those five acres out, that leaves you with 61 and a half acres remaining. And then if you divide that by two and a half acres for the other units based on, again, the use that's there, he's permitted in the RC-5, under the zoning, 24 units on the 61 and a half acres that exists. What we have, I'm sorry, 24 plus the four for the first five acres. So 28 units is what is permitted under the RC-5. The only change, the only additional units that are being looked at here that are specific to the actual use is the adaptive reuse part of this proposal, which is permitting eight adaptive reuse units that gets into the total 36. And that would be four per historic unit on each lot. So the RC-5 permitted in this is 28 acres based on the type of use proposed. Standard adaptive reuse is eight units.
All right, thanks. Sorry to interrupt you. Just two quick comments. One, we look forward to the developer review, which could limit what you can do under the zoning. That's part of the issue. We need to look at the various issues during the SECO analysis. In view, the traffic consultant is applying the documents outside his area of expertise, calls into question his objectivity. We look forward to the part of the SECO review where we are consulted with you to look at some more independent consultants in the early part of the review. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Hans Bohm, 258 Acres Road. Mr. Mafia's report, I was unclear about the portion where he spoke about sightline and 35 mile an hour speed limit. I think I heard him say that he saw no issues with sightline and at 35 mile an hour. So if that is correct, Mr. Mafia, is that correct? Yeah. I don't know what portions of the road you included in that. Is that parts of Primrose? Is it all Acro hook, front Primrose, Route 9? Does it include Fly, Burger Road?
Non-s excessive, as you're saying. It's just the sightlines at the driveway to this site. All Acro hook road booking left and right.
Okay.
And the speed on Acro hook road is directly related to what sightlines should be applied.
So it's a very, very small section.
Just that section.
Just that section, yeah.
The initial question was, did the speed used by Craig Manning in their study wasn't correct for Acro hook? And as it relates to the cyclist, is that different?
Just for the planning board, there are certain sections of Acro hook road, if you increase the density much beyond where it is already with traffic, there's going to be some pretty serious issues. A major portion of that is from Route 9 to where Burger Road, you know, connects with it just before Kippsburg. It's the windiest public road in Rhinebeck. Having 20 miles an hour can be overdoing it around... I mean, 20 miles an hour can be overdoing it around some of the blind turns. Increased traffic, I assume, and possibilities, that's all I want to say. Thanks.
There's nothing more. I truly can contain motion to continue the public hearing. Let's move, step out, this is September 3rd. So, do you have a second? Second, opposed in favor? Aye. Opposed, then adjourned. Seems September 3rd?
Melody. I would suggest that the planning board ask Stefan to supplement his response report to address some of the issues that you made in his response remarks.
Okay, what a good idea. Are you willing to do that, Mr. Mafia? Thank you very much. So, good night, you asked for a vote. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, put in your hand. Okay, thank you very much. We have one last question this evening, that is a time extension. A request from Alexander Lloyd, you know, anyone who's coming back to the board. Okay. Thank you.
I'm tired, boys.
Not quite. We have some more questions.
So, Alexander Lloyd, he has been a member of the children's building house on Morton Road, it's a pretty steep slope site with a lot of slopes, and he worked with them for quite a while on his proposal. He has come back and actually reduced the size of the proposed roof structures, but didn't, but then it was, it was all, it existed, it was an engine, it was taken outside of the size of it. Since it was a reduction, they didn't require a planning board to do. Plans were signed by Melody on number 6, 2024, six-month period authorization.
Excuse me, we're trying to finish up our meeting this evening, I'm having trouble hearing, so, thank you for coming, appreciate your comments.
So the applicant is looking... The applicant is requesting a six-month timeline extension for Section 12578D2 for the site plan and a one-year extension for the special use permit for 12565I. There are no changes to the plans proposed by the request. The applicant is moving forward to construct the plans previously approved with those reductions in the area. I believe the issue is one of internal timelines and outside agency permitting. If the board's in agreement to provide the extension, I provide the following, it's shown up on the screen, through your consideration. The town, the planning board, upon receiving your request for an extension and prior approvals by Alexander Lloyd, in a timely manner hereby grants the following extensions. Extending the date of satisfaction for site plan approval conditions for submission of a complete application for a building permit or CO by six months from August 6, 2024 to February 6, 2025, and extending the end date for satisfaction of the special use permit approval conditions by one year from September 5, 2024 to September 5, 2025.
The only question I have, Jim, would it make sense for those dates to match for both those?
No, the way the code is written, we can do six-month extensions and one-year extensions.
So no...
Especially if it gives us one year.
I have a motion.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, extension motion. Unless there's plenty of further business, I would promote a motion.
Move your hands.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion. Thank you, everyone. I'm off.